Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is February 18th and we are at this evening's 7:30 committee of the whole. So I'd like to call this to order. Tonight's agenda is primarily informative in nature, it appears, and there are five topics that we should cover, some more in-depth than others, given their focus. With that said, the floor will be open to the public for 20 minutes, should there be any signatures on the sign-in sheet. However, it doesn't appear that there are. But otherwise, we would limit that time to five minutes per person. And with this, we might as well get right in with the first item on the agenda, which is Community Development Department, Division of Public Works, Director Horn.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Council. When we were asked to provide this update, the staff and I sat down and looked at the presentations we had provided last one, last January, and as you know, one last month, where we talked about some of the accomplishments. And as we started going through everything, a couple of things came to fruition. The first thing is we've done so much that it didn't make sense to get in the weeds about all these little things that we've changed. The other thing was, I believe, if I'm correct, only two aldermen, or two members of the council, were here when Public Works took over the responsibilities of community development. So I think it's important to explain a little bit how we got to that point. Let me see if this works. So I'm going to talk a little bit about our history, what community development's purpose is in the community, the progress we've made, and what we hope to do moving forward. I will tell you, there's a lot of slides, but I plan on moving very fast between the slides. I did bring a little entertainment, though. If the IT department can help me, I did bring a short, two-minute video. But they have to start it for me, so... Assuming they're panicking in there. There we go. There it is. There it is. If you just take a couple of minutes, this talks about... Well, I'll just let this video speak.
Wow, what a beautiful day. Listen, everyone cheering. This is going to be great. Months of training is paying off now. I'm hydrated, glucose up, and my mental game is on point. Let's do this! Okay, so I'm a little behind on my normal pace, no big deal. Just keep going. And I think I missed a spot on my thigh with my body glide. Sure, that won't be a problem. And I don't need to stop for water just yet. Oh, look, here comes some hills. That'll be fun. Wait, I'm not even halfway through yet. Feels like I've been running forever. What's with all these hills? Is the whole course hills? I think this is going to be tougher than I thought. Where is everybody? Am I still on course? I haven't seen a water stop in forever. Why didn't I get water earlier? Well, it's just me, myself, and the road, I guess. Nothing left to do besides confront all of my inner demons. I am going to die. Why did I ever decide to do this? My thighs are raw like two hams, and I think my toenails just fell off. What else could possibly go wrong? Ah, break the runner's trunks. Well, at least I haven't hit the wall yet. Die, hit the wall. I have never been so tired in all my life. Even my teeth are tired. I think I should just quit. Stop passing me, you jerks! No, I need to power through. I didn't train for months to give up this late. Time to dig deep. Think of that Olympic runner who finished with a broken leg. That was really gross. But the point is, if he can do it, so can I. Now, come on. The finish line is right up there, one foot in front of the other. I did it! Oh, this is the greatest feeling in the world! Carry me to the car. I am going to eat my weight in pasta and sleep for five days.
So, a little humor, but really is a great analogy for what we're going through right now. When we started this, we were on mile one, you know? Positive attitude, everything was going great. But the reality is, is we're in the first half of that marathon still. We have a lot of changes still to make. We have improvements still that we have identified that we want to make. But as you know, all of this takes time. It's nothing that can happen immediately. And when you, you know, when you train for a marathon, you don't train for... There's no couch-to-marathon programs, there are couch-to-5K programs. So you start small and you work your way up. So, just a little history, as some of you may or may not know, community development was always its own department. It had a full-time director. And what we found out pretty early is that there was really poor communication happening in the department. There were times when the staff didn't know when rules and regulations had been changed. They didn't know when codes had been adopted. There just was not that good transfer of information, both ways, down and up. We found that there was really not very good leadership happening in the department. There wasn't a desire to keep things being improved, challenging people to be better, come up with solutions to ongoing problems. And just as a whole department, there was really... There was really a lack of priority put on customer service in all cases. There were some cases where it was really high, but in a lot of cases, it was them versus us. And so as a result of that scenario, or that situation, the city council approved a pretty significant amount of money, I feel it was like around $20,000, to have a professional firm do a survey with area businesses. I think they surveyed almost 1,000 businesses. So, on May 22nd, 2017, I'll never forget that day, Fred and I stood in front of the community development staff at 2 o'clock. I was sweating, it was hot in the room. And we were informed that, and we informed staff that we're... Community Development was going to now be a division of Public Works. And just so you understand what we walked into, I won't ever forget this. I remember standing at the front counter with a longtime employee and talking to them about how we needed to change how we did permits. Because at that time, if you were building a single-family home, you had to fill out by hand six different permit applications for the same project. That was just to submit for a house, it has nothing to do with any of the other requirements. And I was explaining that we need to do this because we need to make it easier for the applicant. It's easier for the applicant, it's easier for us. And I quote, "Why do we have to make it easier for them?" And that was the attitude in the entire department. I think it's not very common that a community development department is part of a Public Works department. I think that we were challenged to fix some of these problems because I... Public Works, long before I got here, had a reputation of getting things done. When there's a problem, Public Works stepped, you know, stepped up and got that project done. So that's... That started it. So the business survey, yes, there was about 1,000 surveys sent out. There's a really long report, I'm sure City Manager has copies, if anyone's interested. There were 148 responses, 15 percent... Or 100, I'm sorry, 148 responses, which equals about a 15 percent response percentage. And community development's grades were, as you see on the screen, 17 percent was negative. And as I looked at that, while that's not good, it does say that 83 percent is satisfied or considers our service as acceptable. So as I dig deeper into the survey, though, I find that... Oops, excuse me. There were significant problems that we had to address. This was a little later in the year, when we got this survey back, I think it was like October. You know, we had very poor disrespectful attitudes by inspectors. There was a concern that people were set up to fail, they were given the wrong information, knowing full well that they were going to end up in violation. So there were a lot of... There was a whole culture that we really had to revamp. And the entire staff has worked very hard at doing that. So initially, when we took over, we tried to split up the community development director responsibilities. So if some of you may recall, the current director at the time, Fred Vought, took over all planning and zoning commission and administration responsibilities, and I took over permit inspections and enforcement. And my days were, I would come into Public Works at 8 o'clock, and at 12:30, I would turn my computer off, bring everything over here, and work till the end of the day, every day, for over a year. That wasn't sustainable, we knew that. Another change that occurred is the community development director position was not replaced with another director, it was actually replaced with the business advocate position. And that position focuses primarily on economic development issues. We also temporarily reassigned a Public Works employee to community development, coincidentally, is sitting in the office, in the audience, to help out with inspections. So we did some initial things to try and basically stay afloat. Things we identified right away, we had at least four potential retirements that were going to be coming up. We also had an inspection vacancy. We had no leadership, regular leadership in the department. The department was really low in morale, and they were very centralized in their work assignments. So we had like four inspectors that all did one type of inspection, and there wasn't a lot of sharing of duties. Major operational issues we've identified, many of you already know about these things. We had really outdated informational forms and applications. Our plan review and inspection process were not consistent. They were... They would change daily, they would change based on the project that would come in. There used to be a, I think it was for garages and certain kind of projects, it was a five-day review. They didn't... It wasn't changed when there was a reduction in staff, so we were always behind on that, and applicants were getting upset. And as we've talked about consistently, the fee schedules, building and zoning codes are very outdated, and we're currently working on those. You're going to hear a lot, I think it was Alderman Sanoika, who used the word "in-flight", so I've grasped onto that, so I use it a lot now. We have a lot of things that are "in-flight," and the fee schedules, building and zoning codes are all included in that. So after we made, after about a year of being in that scenario where we had split those duties, we made some more permanent staffing changes. Oops, did I skip one? I'm sorry. Nope, that's true. We hired or reassigned two inspectors, both happened to come from Public Works. We hired a new permit coordinator, business license clerk. Our administrative services coordinator retired, she was from Public Works, and that was filled by our public, by our community development secretary. We also had two part-time clerical positions that we had planned to use, one in community development, one in Public Works. We were going to train them in both departments, so they were interchangeable. So if someone was sick, or we had a busy time of the season, we could address that. We had two employees hired and left within six months because it was overwhelming, and then because of that, we came to city council and made that position full-time. So it's currently vacant, but we hope to have that filled shortly. And of course, during all that time, we had the union negotiations. And the thing that maybe the council might not be aware of is that when you're dealing with union negotiations, all employee movement freezes. So we couldn't move people around, we couldn't use certain resources to address these things, or we had to on a very limited basis. It also limited our ability to take advantage of third-party inspection assistance. So we really had to be careful about what we did with that. Probably the biggest change, and I don't mind throwing a kudos his way, is, was bringing Don Wenzel, the Internal Services Superintendent, into community development. He provided immediate support and leadership to the division. He stabilized it, he gave them a voice, he gave them the... Made them feel valued day-to-day, which is a huge thing for a staff that hadn't felt valued for many, many months, potentially years, based on what we walked into. And we also were preparing for the director's retirement, which was a significant change because of the amount of workload that that person was taking on every day. So 2019 comes, and the director retires. The assistant was promoted to director, and we started our recruitment and then subsequently hired our current Assistant Director of Public Works, who has been just wonderful. Her experience in community development, planning, zoning, has been just so valuable to the city and to our department. Again, raining kudos on her as well. So that's our history, and that's how we got here in very quick fashion. So I decided to put this in a question, what is community development's purpose? I imagine if I went around the room and had everyone tell me what the purpose was, we'd have a ton of really great answers, but they'd all be different. In our mind, we have one purpose, one purpose only, and that's to make sure that people comply with the codes that this city council adopts. And that really, everything has to tie back to that. We have a lot of different responsibilities, plan reviews, rental, business license inspections, planning and zoning, all of those things that we do, and many more that I wasn't going to try and fit on the slide, all connect back to making sure people comply with what you guys want this city to be. And that's what those codes are. If you think to the year we've had, the last year or two, we've had G1 licenses, backyard chickens, little libraries, adult cannabis, billboards, sign regulations, outdoor seating, microbreweries, variety of tax amendments, new developments, existing developments that have changed. All those things, you guys set the policy on, you guys established that code, that precedent, and it's our job to enforce it as community development. So why is that important, that we enforce the codes? The first and most obvious reason, the reason that any building official will tell you, is to protect the health and safety of the community. So it's not only about our residents, it's not only about someone who's interested in buying a townhome, it's some patron from Palatine that comes and eats in one of our restaurants. It's somebody who shops in one of our stores. Everything's got to be to code, because it's not only about the people who are willing to live with it, it's also about any future person who's willing, who has the desire to use it. The other reason is to protect against mismatched zoning, or nuisance zoning complaints. It's a great picture here, it's like a 30 or 40-story building right next to a two-story home. The great example that zoning people use is you don't want to put a tavern next to a school, right? So there's a lot more innuendo than that, it's not always so easily seen, but that is a huge component of what we do. The other thing, and I just found out about this, there's something called the BSEGs, it's the Building Code Effectiveness Grading Schedule, BSEGs. And that's a rating that every building department in the nation gets. So every state has their own rating. Those BSEGs tied to what's called an ISO, the Insurance Service Office. And they, those ratings determine a state's or a community's insurance rate. So the costs for your insurance for homeowner's insurance, or something like that, is directly tied to our ISO rating. So in the state of Illinois, there's nobody that has a 1. There's one community, the city of Aurora, that has a 2. And then that next column under the 3 is less than 10 percent of the state. City of Rolling Meadows is in that category. That's extremely important to the community. It also impacts economic development, because Fortune 500, bigger companies, companies that want to invest in a community and kind of lay down their roots here, they want to know that they have, they have a building department that's up to date with all their codes, are using current codes, and enforcing them the proper way. And believe me, that BSEGs survey that you have to go through to get that rating is not easy. I wish I would have known that, I would have been shouting it from the mountaintops. It's a very important score to have. And the last one, obviously, is property value. So obviously, the more diverse and well-planned out our commercial areas are, that leads to a higher tax base for commercial, which can then give you guys the opportunity to lower residential tax bases. So that's why we are so pro smart development in this department, you know, since taking over. We really try to make sure that we don't just allow whatever the applicant at that time wants, because we have to understand that whatever they want has a direct impact to all the neighboring properties, and while it might be good for that one business owner, we have to think about what's good for the entire community and the entire neighboring properties around that business. So how do we accomplish some of these things? The first and most important part is to effectively communicate with a variety of applicants. We have to have consistent messages from our biggest developers, down to our single homeowner, homeowner that wants to replace their water heater. We have to have a consistent message about what we require and how we get that accomplished. Also with planning and zoning cases, we need to have a consistent message that our job is to help them, lead them through the process, but not to lead them to believe they're going to be approved or not approved. That's the job of the Planning and Zoning Commission and your job. We don't want to overstep our bounds in that area. So our job is to just help them through the process. Obviously, we want to have clear and concise applications, processes, and fees, and again, we're working hard on those. Timely and consistent plan reviews and inspections, effective, consistent licensing renewals, and property maintenance enforcement. The key is consistency, to try to manage those codes and regulations across the board without favoritism, so we can establish some credibility in how we do and how we operate. And as that says, consistency is hard. It's hard to be consistent. And these are some of the reasons. Sometimes people just don't know, and that's okay. Those are the best, those are our best opportunities to educate. I don't expect a homeowner to understand the permit process for their deck. That's what, that's what we're here for, to help them with. The other issue is the public awareness, but defiance. They know they have to go through the process, but they don't want to. Or they think it's going to take too much time, or whatever the case is. And that, those are the cases where they try to work around staff and either go through you or other parties to try and circumvent the process, thinking they might get through it faster. I can tell you, I will probably miss the opportunity to say it when I wanted to, but I've been doing permitting for at least 16 years. I can, I don't think I can ever think of someone who circumvented the process, and it was less costly, and they saved time. It always takes more time, and it is always more costly. And everyone gets a headache out of it, so. Intervention and disruption of process flow, we, again, if we stick to the process and we maintain our process, usually things go well and are followed properly. Policies, practices, and procedures, we know there's some efficiencies, inefficiencies. We're trying to fix those. Those give justification for people to try and go around the process. So we're trying to fix those, and we're trying to limit those as much as possible. And then lastly, sometimes there are insufficient resources. You know, we only have one health inspector. If we have a restaurant that needs to open and that person's homesick that day, we run into problems. And unfortunately, we've found that you can't share health inspectors' community communities, so you have to try and find a consultant or something like that. So there are times when we don't have the resources to address what needs to be addressed, so that can disrupt our consistency, too. But I do want to take some time to talk about what we have accomplished. The leadership that Don's provided in the department, as it says, has provided a voice in the division. I, you know, we have an employee here that took it upon his own to come out to just support us, and that shows the improved morale that exists in the department. It is a different place to work. I can remember my first month or two there, it felt like I was going down into an unimproved basement. You know, when you go down, it feels dark and dreary, it just felt that way. It doesn't feel that way. Walk into the office, anytime you guys want to come in and take a walk around and meet the staff and stuff, please feel free. It is a different place to work now. Communication has been amazing. Don does daily meetings with his staff, the inspectors, to coordinate inspections. He meets daily with the planning, the plan reviewer, to make sure we're on task with all our plan reviews. And he meets weekly, does weekly safety meetings, and bi-weekly department meetings. You have to understand that that, this whole department never You have to understand that that, this whole department never had a department meeting. They never knew what was going on. So, that was a huge thing that, I have to give the city manager credit because he said you absolutely will do these. And we also have the entire community development staff, subject, with the exception of one person, come to Public Works every month and join us in our all-staff meeting. So, there is a, definitely a teamwork mentality. Don's brought accountability, he's provided programs that require everyone to put in equal input into inspections and enforcement, and if something's not followed up on, he holds them accountable, and that's a huge benefit to the department. And obviously, continuing to work on forms in our processes. Some changes we made that were specifically noted on the survey. We boosted our inspector, inspector training and development, we spent a lot of time in ensuring that our inspectors try and get trained and improve their skills every day. As I said, we hired two new inspectors, that was a recommendation of the, of the survey to, to increase staffing inspectors. We implemented third-party consultants. Obviously, we couldn't increase the staff there, we're still at the same staff from 1-2017, but by having a third-party consultant, we can take care of those ebbs and, those peaks and valleys without, with keeping the staffing levels the same. And we've established a protocol for permit and plan review processes, we're still refining that, but we do have a protocol in place. The big thing for me, I can tell you, when I started there, I probably received three to five complaints a week about inspector attitudes and things, and I can tell you, I don't know if you guys have had those, but I have not had one inspector complaint. I'm just saying, since January 2019, it could have been before that, but for sure, in the last year, I have not had one person complain about how our inspector spoke to them or treated them with disrespect, which is a huge thing in building that bridge to the Some of our staffing issues, we're developing more predictable review and inspection times by, again, by using out-forcing properly. Our inspectors are gaining experience and respect because they're learning more, they're getting more involved. We've empowered the decision, the staff to make, to make decisions. I thought it was in something here, but we got rid of a lot of bureaucratic red tape, bottom line. The previous method for approving many, many of the things that our staff now approves over the counter or on the spot, it would sit in the director's office and they would just sign it, that's all it was, was just a signature and they wouldn't even read it, it just would get signed. So, there are days that things would get delayed just for a signature. So, we've empowered our staff to do some of that. Our staff has a can-do attitude now, they're entirely customer service focused, it's all about helping the resident. Our motto is assistance first, enforcement second. So, we, we try to help, we try to help, we try to help, when there's no other options, then we go to enforcement. Some operation modifications that were made, we continue to modify our application and informational forms. I think, had you gone to our permit application website a year ago, maybe, there were like 30 different forms, now there's like 10. And we can still refine those, these are just the ones we've gotten done so far. Outsource, we've outsourced, plan reviews, inspections, I keep saying that, it's been a huge help, but then we can keep people on task, especially our large commercial projects. Don has developed more appropriate over-the-counter permits and express permits. The express permits are not on a faster timeline externally, but they are internally. So, what he does is he triages those as soon as they come in, gets them in the hands of the inspector, they try and get those done in a couple days. We don't want to publicize that because we get off a day or two, we don't want people screaming that we didn't get their permit in time, but we really try and get those out ASAP, which helps our regular plan reviewer, so he's not burdened by these little projects. Again, we're improving our planning and zoning process, which we've talked about before, the bureaucratic practices, we've eliminated those, and we've developed a lot of improvements for our Planning and Zoning Commission, we've developed some standardized methods of approving or not approving a development. We've provide the reports online, we email those to the commissioners, all that used to be done by paper. Another thing we've done, and it's more philosophical, is we want to get applicants through expeditiously, but not at the expense of smart development, and giving the commissioners appropriate information to review. In the past, I think they received just the bare minimum, and the approvals were made with a handful of conditions, and we don't want conditions anymore. One or two are fine, but when it gets to the city council, we want everything buttoned up, we don't want a lot of loose ends. So, that change has been significant. Completed or in flight. So, obviously, last year, we did complete the comprehensive plan, which was a huge undertaking. We are in the process of updating our building codes and fee structures, zoning ordinance as well, applications, forms, outsourcing, that's a lot of the same stuff, I'm sorry for that. Some big changes, business license, home occupation license, special events approvals, temporary sign approvals, all those things have been revamped and made easier, quicker reviews, quicker approvals. We also allow conditional approve, conditional permits and conditional occupancies. That is enormous, it was never done before. I can specifically remember with my first week here, the IPA came and was going to shut down a project, a huge project we had, and when they pulled out the plans, there were no conditions attached to it. We're talking about multimillion-dollar project, there's no conditions. What used to happen is, even if you had one comment outstanding, they would make the applicant resubmit six new sets of drawings with the updated plan. That makes a project, that, that's what irritates a permit applicant. So, now we have the ability to give people conditional permits and conditional occupancies, provided they are not related to life safety issues, so, and that would, that makes sense. Comprehensive plan, one of the things I'm proud of is, as part of the comprehensive plan, it was very important to myself and the previous director, that we actually didn't just talk about all these great things, we actually had a way to implement those and, and kind of like an action plan. So, what we've developed is a huge table that shows all the different, about 75 to 100 different things that the comp plan calls for, and we've touched at least 50 of those already. So, we're, we're using that document to, and integrating it into our capital planning process, which is, which is very important. So, we talk about what our challenges are as we move forward. Obviously, as is always, the challenge is, is staffing. We need to be smart about, as people retire, that we're refilling those positions with, with the greatest need for the city. So, we're going to look at all those individually and make sure we're making smart decisions. The vocal minority, as I said, the survey, right, so out of 997 business owners, 25 were not, not 25, 25 responded and 12 were not happy. So, excuse me, 25 were not happy. So, that is the vocal minority. You're only going to hear back in a survey, the people who are upset, generally. So, it's important that when those vocal minorities get to you folks and to our partners, that we don't perpetuate that, that negativity, that we're allowed an opportunity to fix that before it gets out of hand. And that leads to our third one, obviously, a challenge is always when applicants want to sidestep our process and go through you or, or the chamber or others to get an approval. And then, the big one is our enterprise resource program, which obviously is a city initiative, that's going to have a huge impact on community development operations moving forward. So, a couple months ago, I think it was Alderman Sanoika again, said, hey, what can we do to help staff? These are some of the things we talked about. The first thing is, if something doesn't sound right to you, chances are it's not, please call us, let us see if we can educate you, and then find out what a problem is before it becomes a big problem. Again, I'll, I'll just reiterate, first question should be, have you talked to staff? If someone's calling you and, and saying, I got a problem with XYZ, a lot of the problems we've run into ish, into, in recent history, didn't come to us first, and, and we need to close that avenue off. I certainly, your alderman and a mayor and Chamber of Commerce, you have to be there for your constituents, you have to be there for them, but we want to direct them to us first. And then if we're not doing the job that you want of us, then please, I want to be called on the carpet, but I want an opportunity to fix it before it gets to you and becomes a problem. And then, also, as we continue to grow in the department, we want to be educated by you all and, and find out what's most important for you that you want us to start addressing that maybe we are falling short on. I mean, I'm thinking that a lot of the things I've touched on tonight are things you want us to get better at, but if there's things that are specific, please, share those. And again, I, we call it sidestepping, you know, when, when you take that call and you say, I'll, I'll look into it, that, that's sidestepping the process. I would encourage you to say, hey, have you talked to our staff? Call the staff, they can help you with that. If they don't help you, call me back and I'll look into it. That would be a much more helpful way to us in handling those matters. You know, I think we're on the right track, I don't think, I know we are. I, I don't know what that bird is, but it's a good bird, it's in flight. So, we, we have tons of things in flight, there will always be things in flight, you know, the marathon always has a fish, finish line, we're going to reach a finish line, but shortly thereafter, we're going to run another marathon and there's going to be another finish line, so those, those runs never, never end. I, I just, I'm confident in where we're going, I'm confident that the changes we are making are going to be foundational and, and will last, they're not just going to be flash-in-the-pan changes to appease somebody for a moment in time, they're good, solid changes that will last for years to come. What our staff wanted to put this, wanted this slide in, because they want you to know that these things are important to them. They want to be seen as a resource for the community, they want to be supported by you and others, they want to use technology to help, which is the ERP item. So, these are the things that they're striving for and, and want your support in accomplishing. So, our goals for 2020, our big-time goals, is, is to be quick, we do have some potential retirements coming up, we want to be efficient in how we replace those positions and have good decisions made, so when that does happen, we can be efficient with that. We want to complete our zoning ordinance update, I think we're revisiting that issue at the March meeting, if any of you are interested, I would encourage you to come out. We plan on completing our fee revisions by May, that's my goal. We are going to start the building code updates towards the end of the year. The ERP program, we have three employees, two are behind me, and Elizabeth Payne, you all know her, they are leading our team for the ERP implementation, and Melissa will tell you, it is not an easy task. It, it takes those resources out of our department for a significant amount of time of the year, so that it is going to be a difficult year, because the enter gov, getting that right, day one, is going to be huge, it's going to be very, as important to community development is as the financial portion of it was to the entire city. It, it's really going to dictate how we operate moving forward. So, please call, please call these numbers if you have an issue, Don should always be your first call, and then either Joel and, or myself after that, I'd prefer you call Joel, it's just my own personal preference. And then, lastly, you know, I just want to end with the fact that when we took over the department, it, it was a broken department, and it didn't take three years to get there. It took a long time getting to that point. It's not going to take us long to get out of it, but it's going to take time. And, you know, we're making significant changes, I didn't want to get down in the weeds about all the different changes we've made, but I would be more than happy to sit down with you and go over anything you want about what we've changed. I can start rambling on a lot longer, but I know you don't want that. But I'd be happy to answer any questions or comments, Don and Joel are here, Joel is really the planning and zoning liaison, and Don is more the operational, so if you have any questions regarding anything I brought up, we are all available for answers.
Thanks, Director Horn. Are there any questions from the council this evening? Very thorough presentation, we do appreciate you not getting in the weeds. If there, yeah, I mean, we don't, for me personally, I don't, I don't want to hear a lot about the technical issues that lead to a, to an event, I'm very concerned with what the, the higher level issue was, but more so concerned about what the solution is going forward, and that's usually what I get whenever I have to touch base with either you, Joel, or, or Don, and so I appreciate that.
Great, thank you. Appreciate no one having any questions.
We have a guest behind you.
I have a guest, so, real quickly, I just want to piggyback on what Rob's done, and since he's been here, Don Wenzel's been here a very long time, and Joel, and the entire Public Works staff. When I got here, again, six years ago, I had to comment, I felt so compelled, because the department was functionally dysfunctional at that time, and the inroads that were made, number one, from when Rob came on board and when he put Don in community development, I was intimately involved in the fire station project, where we had hurdle after hurdle after hurdle, and we overcame those, most likely, we overcame that because of Don Wenzel and his requisite knowledge of what's going on in the city with all our partners, from ComEd to IDOT to Illinois Environmental Protection, to the city itself, to Comcast and AT&amp;T and WOW, so I cannot give enough kudos to the progress that the community development and Public Works itself has made. I think the most telling thing was back in the day when I gave my little emergency management, the most pointed thing I saw from Public Works, and it's not a big thing, but it was a big, a nice thing, is that he had the shirts made as first responders, and, and they are. There's no 911 for Public Works, it's, every day is 911, anytime that number comes up, they, they answer it just like 911. Anytime in a city project for the, either the fire stations or anything operationally that we've had a need for, Public Works has answered the call, so kudos to all you guys and gals, thank you.
Thanks, Chief. Thank you, Director Horn. Piggybacking off of community development, we have economic development, which ties right in, and so I'll defer to you, Ms. Corner.
Good evening, members of city council, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I first want to say that as a business advocate, it's been a pleasure to work with the entire team here at the city, including the members of the city council, staff, the economic development committee, and most importantly, the business community. The business advocate position, as a new position in the city, has required some adjustment from an organizational standpoint. The business advocate does not work within the community development department, although the office is there. I'm the business advocate and I have an open-door policy with Don, we talk daily, I have weekly meetings regularly with Joanne, the Assistant Director of Public Works, and so things are coming along in terms of effective communications and the appropriate times for the business advocate to engage in what's going on with businesses in the community, and through doing some sort of build-out, if they're thinking about locating here in the city, anything along those lines. They often come to the business advocate first because it is an appropriate first stop, and as time goes on, it's, it's an easier process to be effectively, you know, assisting these businesses when they, when they engage in some sort of investment in the community, such as, as time goes on, things are smoothing out, settling in, and the business advocate is able to more proactively engage in some specific economic development effort. is able to more proactively engage in some specific economic development efforts. That being said, I'd just like to quickly recap what's going on and what's happened in 2019. We saw 51 new businesses open their doors in the city of Rolling Meadows, up from 37 in 2018, large and small. School Health opened its new corporate headquarters and distribution facility adjacent to Gallagher on Apollo Drive. They have a Spac Industrial space that's being filled by a forensic engineering firm, which should be opening in the next month or two. Amish Farmers opened, it's a small-scale grocer on Plum Grove Road, combines organic produce and more or less Eastern European deli foods. Hangout Cafes opened on Plum Grove Road, Daisy's Cafe, and many others have opened as well. Looking forward to 2020, we'll see a number of new businesses again, some expansions. ATS Sortomat is doubling its operations on Meadowbrook Drive, it's a worldwide regional location for that business. A Lot Hotel continues to work on its establishment of the brand here in Rolling Meadows, and that should take place in 2020. We have a number of restaurants coming online, which is very good, filling smaller vacancies throughout the city. Not always chains, more independents, very exciting to see these doors opening soon. Epic Solutions has opened its new corporate headquarters on Industrial Drive. They relocated from Schaumburg and doubled their square footage. Leaky Keg Brewery will be opening during the summer, that's our first microbrewery and distillery operation here in the city of Rolling Meadows, very exciting for the community and for the Northwest suburbs. As I mentioned, SCA Limited is opening in the school health building, and just a number of, you know, really fun restaurants opening. Teriyaki Madness at the bottom of the list is opening its first Chicago location outside of Seattle, and they specifically identified the space they wanted here in Rolling Meadows as their first location. The Business Quarterly, the Business Messenger Quarterly Newsletter is in its full second year of production. The newsletter is mailed on a quarterly basis exclusively to businesses in the city of Rolling Meadows, to approximately 1,000 postal addresses, including some commercial property owners as well. The Business and Community Showcase is in its third year, this will be April 23rd at the Meridian Banquet Conference Center, the second time over last year. Planning is underway, these postcards actually hit the businesses today, and I already have received registrations. The key features of this event are business-to-business networking, and then open to the public free of charge for the public to come in and see what kind of businesses we have here in Rolling Meadows. This year is enhancements over last year. We're encouraging businesses to actively engage in job fair activities. We'll have more active displays of available spaces, and, you know, more involvement by the different departments as far as what their services are for the community. Continental Towers is just completing a $15 million renovation project to maintain its status as a trophy office property in the Chicago suburbs. Those are depictions that you see there, they're largely complete, and you'll see pictures and the weekly notes at the end of this week. And when this landscaping is all finished, what was a hardscape at Continental Towers will effectively be a greenscape with outdoor seating areas, fire pits, much more greenery, and much more welcoming to the tenants there and those to come. Other efforts that are continuing to come to fruition are the Next Level Northwest, that's a regional consortium of five communities in the Northwest suburbs. The board has recently expanded to include Wintrust Bank and Comcast, so it truly is evolving into a public-private partnership to provide professional business coaching assistance to businesses throughout these five Northwestern suburban communities. Rolling Meadows is just finishing its first engagement for one of its businesses, Lakeshore Title, and through the assistance of the professional coach, one might credit some of the increased closing activity to the Next Level Northwest accelerator effort. Events and committees continue to flourish. Laurie Cisak will review the Community Events Foundation events throughout the year. We partner in a lot of ways to market the sponsorships available to businesses throughout the year for these events, and the Economic Development Committee continues to be very active in lending suggestions and providing support to staff and other aspects of the city. Business retention and attraction, as I mentioned before, it's increasingly, how shall we say, not easy, but to be more proactive in working with these businesses as they come in and they have questions about what they need to do. And therefore, we can more actively attract the businesses, because we have a level of certainty about the process. The comprehensive plan and zoning code updates, as you've heard before, are a process, and we do actively maintain a list of available properties throughout the city. So, anyway, I think you all have received copies of the Business Messenger, and I think you did receive a copy of the Next Level Northwest annual report, and things are cooking. I welcome any questions and suggestions, and as always, it's a pleasure to work with the team here.
Thank you, Martha. Any questions or feedback for Ms. Coroner? Alderman Sanoyka?
Thank you so much for that wonderful presentation. Do we have anything to look forward to for 2020, 2021?
As I mentioned before, we have a number of new businesses coming in. I think the list is included in your report. We're working on expanding the showcase platform, and I think most importantly, it's a matter of with certainty, engaging with prospective businesses in the community, helping them find locations, being informative and helpful as we go along. But it's still sort of an evolution of the business advocate relative to the other departments in the city, and we are working hard with the Economic Development Committee to develop an economic strategic plan.
Thank you.
Anything further?
No.
Thank you. Any other questions, feedback? Thank you for the recap.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. That brings us now to the 2020 census item. This, again, is one of those subjects that is not going to be too in-depth here. Myself, Alderman Sanoyka, staff, and some local residents are volunteering on the Complete Count Committee. As everyone knows by now, the census is conducted every 10 years, and we are now in that cycle, where we're going to be undergoing the census as of April 1st. Basically, what our goal as the Complete Count Committee is, is to engage the community as often as possible, and with the greatest amount of transparency as the necessity for participating in the census, for counting those residents that are in your household, or you yourself, if you are transient, and even more so identifying those harder-to-reach resident, non-residents in the community, those who live in multi-unit dwellings. They tend to be more mobile and less fixed in a given residence from, you know, year to year. And so, it's our goal and role to continue taking this message out to the residents, piggybacking on every event possible between now, and actually, we're going to supersede the census date and go on to early May, when Natalia, the social worker for the Rolling Meadows Police Department, is hosting a family day in the East Park Apartments, and just going to continue beyond just the census day to go ahead and continue the outreach. We did officially receive the grant funding, so we, you had heard me mention that we had received the grant before, but the funding finally made its way into our City Hall, in our bank account, so to speak. And that's a big, big victory, because that enables us to now buy the hardware we need to go ahead and collect information for residents, their signatures, their emails, help them make commitments to participate. Every time that we have an opportunity to connect with the resident and have them provide some sort of confirmation that they will participate, or at least pay attention to it, it's one more bite toward ownership, and I think it's obliged of all of us as councilmen and women and aldermen representatives of our ward to continue to bring this message out. So, while you're at the events and you do see our booths at the events, please recommend to those other attendees to go stop by, pick up some literature, and also share the information with those who might not be aware. Alderman Sanoyka, I don't know if I've covered everything, but from a high level, is there anything else that you'd like to bring up?
I just want residents to realize that when we're talking about transient populations, this is in addition and kind of superseding just that traditional stereotypical picture of a homeless person that's living under a bridge. We're also talking about someone who perhaps lost their job in their mid-50s, and they're living with one son or daughter for one part of the year, and then they move to another part of the year. These types of individuals that don't necessarily have a fixed address, or they're staying with other people, that's really a very difficult population for us to hit. So, if you, if any residents know of these individuals, we're going to need their help to make sure that they're counted as well. For every person that we don't count, I believe the statistic is essentially a loss of about $15,000 over 10 years. If you aren't counted in this census, you don't count at all, because these only happen every decade. So, it is crucially important for us to participate and to participate fully.
Thank you, and you brought up a good point also for transciency. There is such a thing as high school homelessness. There are high school-age individuals who do bounce from family to family, and they too need to be counted. This money, as Alderman Sanoyka did bring up, does help with our infrastructure, but it also leads to overall economic development. And so, it's very important, and it ties greatly with all facets of the community, so long as we make sure that we get our residents to fulfill their obligation, which is report their family members, their income, and all the details that the census does ask for. And again, we will provide a lot of literature at each one of our tables, so that way people can become familiar with it, but most importantly, just remember that it's a good thing to participate, it's not about a big brother, or just being part of this count. It literally equates to dollars, and those dollars drive our community forward. With that, are there any questions from the council?
One last thing. Correct me if I'm wrong, but we definitely also want to make sure whether a resident is a legal or illegal, they still need to be counted.
Absolutely.
And there's no, from what I understand, there's no questions, there's no, there's nothing on there that, where they have to say their status?
No, and there's no retaliation as a result of the affiliation of legal or non-legal.
There's absolutely no reason why they shouldn't, you know, make sure that they're counted.
Correct. Alderman Sanoyka?
So, I believe what Alderman Vissesi was alluding to was whether or not only US citizens count for the census. It is all individuals, including newborn infants, so if you have a baby within three days of the census, then that baby also counts. And the US Census Bureau, that entire bureau, and all of the individuals that work for it have to swear an oath, and all of the information that they receive is confidential through life. There are severe penalties for anyone that uses that information for any other purpose other than the census.
Further questions?
That's what I tried to say.
Okay, wonderful. So, just take it out to your residents, those in your ward, and just keep spreading the word, remind them of the April 1st census date, and to participate. That'll move us on to new utility software service enhancements. Ms. Gallagher?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council, and for residents at home, this is an informational piece to highlight the utility billing, new enhancements for the city software coming up. So, we thought, continuing our conversation, we wanted to highlight some of the items that are forthcoming. So, we've got a short PowerPoint presentation, and we're going to continue the conversation over the next few months to talk about some of the changes and the update into this important investment for our comprehensive software upgrade. So, we are highlighting some of the new service enhancements, and it really focuses on the technology facing our customers. And so, it is a customer-focused technology that's coming forward, and it's really going to bring back some things for residents that they were used to a little bit before. We had some e-billing a couple of years ago, and now we are able to bring this back, and that's really one of the features we'll talk about. As a reminder, we have about 6,700 approximately, city bills, or residents and businesses that we bill out monthly, and that's for water, sewer, and stormwater, and garbage and recycling. And listening to customers' feedback throughout the years, and talking with residents, as we've worked with residents many, many years, we realized that we need to really think about what they're looking for. And many of the things, such as flexible payment options, making sure that it works with your smartphone devices and your laptops at home, and your computers at home too, making sure that the website has some added features, so we have a new citizen self-service portal coming in. We also wanted to add some new features on the utility bills, so we took some feedback from people in terms of their monthly utility bill, what they'd like to see on their utility bill. So, what we are trying to do right now is really focus our attention on providing excellent customer service and being very proactive with our residents. So, communication is key, as Director Rob Horde mentioned. We also, in finance, make sure that collectively, as a city as well, are enhancing our communication efforts. So, as we mentioned not too long ago, what we're trying to do is making sure that we're informing residents and businesses of these new changes that are happening. So, anytime we are on the phone call with a resident talking about their utility bill, we're also mentioning some of the new changes. At the finance front counter, inserts in with the utility bills, if you did open up your utility bill, or for some folks around the 20th, you open it. So, basically, when you open up your utility bill, you'll see that there's a new insert for the February utility bill. And so, we're going to continue that with different utility bills, and making sure that that information goes in there. Also, we have social media that we're trying to make sure that folks know what's going on, and then also including in the city e-news and regular newsletter, making sure that people have the information. In March, we are going to combine a very special mailing out to residents, to utility billing customers, the new changes that are happening, so that people know those changes that pertain to how they pay their bill. As we mentioned, there are some changes in deadlines and things like that, we're going to get out. Within that special mailing, we're going to include a special insert from our US Census Complete Count Committee, and we're going to include that in our special mailing as well. So, estimated next steps for our timeline, we are working toward a May 1st Go Live, so we're bringing the software Go Live, May 1st. But right now, like I mentioned, we have a special mailing coming out to residents with an insert about the US Census survey, and then at the March Committee, the whole meeting, we're going to come back and talk about the presentation of the new utility bill, so that you can see firsthand what's going to go out with utility bills to residents, and you'll be able to look at that, and we'll kind of discuss some of the changes. At April, Mark, we're going to be at the final data cutover to Tyler Muniz, so moving from our legacy software over to the new software. April Cow meeting, we're going to review the new self-service portal, a really important service enhancement for our residents, and we're really excited about that. Our businesses too have been asking this for years, so this is a great, great achievement. May 1st, our new utility bills will be mailed out. Residents may begin then, after May 1st, after you get your paper bill, you can log on, enroll into our citizen self-service portal, and then you sign up for your e-bill as well. And then at the May Committee, the whole meeting, we'll continue the conversation, and make sure that you have knowledge, because residents obviously watch the meetings as well, review the new payment methods and how to access that. And what we're doing right now in finance is doing a lot of step-by-step instructional pieces that we'll also include on the website. So, an important integration is our Tyler cashiering, and also our Tyler utility billing. And so, each one of these modules has been carefully planned and developed. It is an integrated solution that will help the finance front counter and staff and residents achieve much efficiency at the front counter. And I wanted to give a couple of examples. So, for one example, is when we have a citizen, such as a senior service, a senior citizen come to the front counter, they might have their invoices for senior snow plowing, and they might have a utility bill. When they're at the front counter, they may not have those pieces of information right in front of them, so they ask you to look it up. And when we do that, we may have to go to a spreadsheet, go to a piece of paper, it might be in multiple locations. What the software is doing now is we can search by their name, their address, or other ways, and it pulls up the information all in one, so they can see their bill for their utility bill, and then their accounts receivable invoices for senior snow plowing. Less time at the counter, although we do like to talk with everybody, but it does help the overall efficiency and services for the city. Real-time payments, this is a real big achievement for the city. We're working towards a configurable payment and collection option, so that when a payment is made at the front counter, it also then is live in our system. It's really important during particularly a shut-off and delinquent process to make sure that we can see those payments live, rather than having to wait a day to post. So, there's some advantages to that. After a resident pays that payment, you could log on and immediately see that payment as well. So, real-time payments is a great option or achievement for the city. Now, we do have scanline technology already at the city, but this scanline technology that we're integrating also- that we're integrating also then integrates into the citizen self-service portal. So this also, now we'll have a shut-off invoice, and our delinquent invoice will have a scanline technology. Future invoices, such as business licenses and then building permits, will also have scanline technology, again, continuing the integration. So what we're trying to do is work towards reducing inaccuracies, particularly in our online bill pay, and then we also will be integrating again with citizen self-service Enhance security and safety for payments. I will guarantee you right now, our payments are secure right now, but whenever you can add layers of protection and security, we should. And so our Tyler cashiering system will not store any billing or customer data or credit card information, and our current system doesn't either right now. But we want to make sure that we're continuing that effort. And so folks in the industry know PCI compliance or payment card industry standards, and also chip-enabled. We are going to have chip-enabled cards at, or card readers at the counter. And then, of course, that meets all our best practices for point-of-sale, and then we have lots of data control access and permissions that we integrate within the software for our cashiers. Our auditors also like, when we talk about this slide, if we were talking about that with them, they like to make sure that we're secure, and we do too. All types of tender at the cash register, cash check, and all types of credit card. And then again, this overall is going to help us reduce our clicks in making sure that we're accurate as well. So if we had sound on this PowerPoint, you would hear cheering, and you would not only hear it from the finance department, but you would definitely hear it from our residents and our businesses. This is the most requested item. When are you going to electronic billing, and when are you going to payment portal that works, so we can see our usage history? That's what we really were working for, towards. So after our first bill is mailed out in May, again, you're going to be able to sign up and receive the bill through email, and then you're also going to be able to look at your consumption history over time. We are trying to bring forward as much data as we can, so that when you enroll, you'll be able to see that usage history and trend line data as you go forward. Residents also are going to see their past bills, once we get some historical information there too. And then you're going to be able to see your actual bill as though it was sitting in from you as your paper bill. That's really important. We realize too that we don't have that now, and so when we're speaking with people over the phone, they might be looking at a field, and we can't really help them. So being able to see that in your system is really important, so that's coming too. The citizen self-service portal, or online bill pay, and also you can view your bills, it's 24/7 access. So at any time of the day, you'll be able to log in, it's a safe and secure site, and again, consumption history, previous bills, and then also your billing history. Eventually, we're going to be able to integrate our accounts receivable invoices, and then we're going to be able to integrate business licenses and building permits too. So we're working towards a one-stop-shop. Again, another new service enhancement is the system-generated delinquent notices and shut-off notices. A really important feature to any municipality is making sure that you're collecting on those shut-off proordinants. And so one of the things that we do in finance, it's a very cumbersome mail merge process, I will not bore anyone with the details, but it is something that we really tried hard to make sure that the system were able to generate that information for us, so that we can make sure that that is a very streamlined process. Not only that, when we're looking at all of these things, we want to make sure that we're collecting on those balances and maybe even increase that collection process as Another new feature is the flexible rate setup. Again, more of the technological, technology piece that is a little bit more complex, but in our current system, we're very flat, so we're not able to change much in our current system. In the new system, we are able to adapt and change as we move forward. Those are the kinds of things that you want a software program to do for you. There's flat rates, there's consumptions rates. We are on a tiered system, so it's really important to have a system that can change with you as you move forward. The flexible bill statement design is really important too. If we ever needed to make a change on our current invoice, we're able to do that through some programming and changes, but it is something that we can do. If we had to do that now, it's really very difficult. Also, what we have are some new options to help set up customers a little bit easier on our end, means a little more seamless on the customer end, and that does help our real estate transfer process as well. At the bottom of the screen there, you'll see consumption trend. That's actually from the citizen self-service portal that we're testing. We're testing and testing and testing. We get a little bit of a software fatigue a little bit between IT and finance, but we're really, we're making sure that we're looking at everything. What I'm showing you here with this consumption trend, that also will show on the printed bill as well. So you see it online, and then you see it in your printed bill. So service enhancements with each type of payment method. Our front, at City Hall, we have a white drop box. People that will not, for people that's not going to change, you still can drop your payment in there with a check, and we'll still process that. It's not on the screen here, but we do process that at the front counter. So that's the finance cashier on a daily basis. So cash, checks, credit cards, debit cards, real-time payments, as I mentioned, and chip-enabled readers for credit cards and debit cards, and that is a service enhancement for us. Our bank lockbox is with Chase Bank, so when people mail in their payments, that goes to our Chase Bank lockbox, a secure payment. And that also, with our new invoice, will increase our accuracy. Online bill pay, that is another way that folks will log on to their bank and make their payment with their bank, and then we actually get an electronic file from a bank, and then we post those payments. In a nutshell, that new invoice is going to help us with our overall accuracy. We have auto-pay customers or auto-automatic payment, which is on the twentieth of the month. Lots of people sign up for that, and we believe that now, because of all of the different fraud problems that are out there in the world, that this increases our protections for the city as well. Because basically, you self-enroll, we don't maintain the paper, we don't have to worry about shredding the paper at a certain point, all the PCI compliance then flows through a self-service portal. And then also, folks can sign up for checking or savings with bank draft as well, or auto-pay. We are still cognizant that not everyone is going to be technology savvy or have access to computers or smartphones. We are still going to enroll folks with paper for bank draft only or for checking or savings. And then also, just to make sure that we're looking out for seniors too. So possible, those are kind of the service enhancements overall, just big picture. But we did want to mention just one that is a possible future service improvement. And why this one is really important is it's a post-go-live, in meaning that we're going to bring the software live first and think about what other things we can do to improve. We believe in continuous improvement. In a nutshell, this is really that over-the-phone payment. It's pretty recognizable, no matter what type of larger utility or retail, but for a municipality, it takes time to build these things. It's called IVR, interactive voice response. In a nutshell, you're making your payment by phone. It does offer the ability to do those payments with English or Spanish prompts. We would like to eventually get to that point, but we want to make sure, we first make sure all the bills are out and all the things are working as they should, see what tweaks need to happen, but our goal is to bring this as a possible service enhancement go-forward. So we know that there's going to be lots of questions, concerns. We reach out to you if you have residents who have questions now, tell them to give us a call or email us. We have lots of information to come, and we're always happy to answer any questions as we move forward, so appreciate your patience too.
Thank you. I can't wait for the auto-draft opportunity myself, so thank you. Any questions or follow-ups?
Just a quick one. Some people may be wondering, will all the payment options be free? Because I know some things, when they're, say it's a pay-by-phone or pay-by-email, there may be a...
Service fee.
A service fee.
No fees at all.
Okay. Thank you.
Good question.
Any other questions? Wonderful, seeing none. Then why don't we close out the night with 2020 community events? Let's talk about some parties. Lori, are you...
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Melissa, do I just...
Yes.
Thank you. Since I missed my opportunity in October to share some fun slides with you, I thought I'd take some brief moments to do that this evening. And on behalf of the Community Events Foundation Committee, we'd like to thank you for your continued support through the year for these exciting city events. And I will say, if my slideshow had sound, I think every slide would be laughter and giggling. So we start off the year with Taste the Town. Last year was on March 2nd. Basically, this is an indoor taste of Rolling Meadows. Our goal each year is to grow the attendance and to grow our restaurant participation. Last year, we had seventeen total restaurants. To date, we have sixteen, and I'm hoping to secure about two more before the event. Martha Corner does a great job of organizing and doing the business and community showcase. Last year, Martha, correct me if I'm wrong, we had about thirty-five to forty participating businesses, so working on the, on just ways to engage our community now, and looking forward to another successful showcase this year. City markets run May through September once a month, and we just wanted to bring in new features, new music. That's kind of our mission each year or for each month. We try really hard to bring in different vendors and to increase our attendance. Memorial Day events start, obviously, in the last week of May with a veterans dinner on Friday. This year, we are changing that to the first Friday in November, just to split that up a little bit. It was a lot happening, and the Veterans Committee got together and said, hey, let's do a little bit of a change and split it up, so that we have something going on during Veterans Month in November. The Black Party was a huge success on Central after we moved it from Kirchhoff in 2019. We estimated attendance to be about three thousand people. It's definitely a partnered police event. We thank the department very much for all of their time and resources that go into that. Fire as well, can't overlook them. And it's really just a great general city event, one of my favorites, and it has a little bit of everything for everybody. And the new location was just perfect to allow us to spread out, and we needed the Friday's Rock are, oops, sorry. Friday's Rock are our concert series that go on June, July, and September. And, you know, each month is different, depends on the weather, sometimes depends on the music, but we try to deliver and just make sure that people know what to expect each time, to give them some music in the park and have a good time with friends and family. And then, of course, the highlight of last year, we can't ignore it, and it deserved a screen all its own, was having our Clydesdales come to our city. So it was a wonderful event. I know it's happened once before, maybe more, I could be wrong, but we're happy to say we saw it, and we were a part of it. Of course, the parade was bigger and beefier because of it, and the whole team and city community businesses all come together very nicely to deliver a great day. Mike Rep at Rep's Place was able to partner with us. It was his idea to have a post-parade party, so there was music and food and features and fun activities in the parking lot in front of his restaurant. Due to volunteer needs, the city has decided to back out of that this year, but Mike is taking it on and doing it on his own. I think he's going to reduce the hours, have it a little bit more evening-based, but it should be a great time. Parking Lot Party is another event that we're finding tough. It's just tough to get volunteers at certain times of year, and the Park District does a wonderful job of providing eighty percent of the features. And after a discussion with Amy Charlesworth, the executive director over there, she said we're completely confident in being able to take it on, and it just, it was needed. There's a point of we have to cut back just to make it work for our group. National Night Out, I should let Chief Nowacki take this one, but wonderful event that they definitely are the main providers for, and last year definitely proved to be one of the most successful. I put down three thousand people, was about that. So it was wonderful. That was the event where he showcased the...
Good Samaritan Award for the first time?
Wind Down by the Creek is another one of my favorites. It is our concert in the park in August, and the difference being, we sell beer and wine at this one. So as you can imagine, it's a little more crowded, a little more festive, and we also tried to choose the biggest-name band for this event, and it definitely proved to be Seventh Heaven Evening. We beat all attendance records at forty, about forty-five hundred people. So it was a great time, despite the half-hour rain, and we got some rainbows. Senior Luncheon is a, an event we've been doing since the sixtieth anniversary, so going on the fifth year, and each year it gets, it gets a little better. So we love it. Last year, we had about one hundred and thirty-five people. I think the highest was one sixty during the sixtieth year. So it has gone down a little bit, but it's popular, and we have a great time, and we get music, and treat the seniors to just a nice special lunch out. And then the Hometown Hoedown is a newer event, something that's more unique, and it's a great time for all ages. Last year was the first year it didn't rain, and it was a blast. The band was able to play almost all the way through. It did actually rain at the end, so we had to cut it short by a half hour, but to me, that's a win, because it wasn't a total rain. So it was wonderful. It's just a cool event, full of fall festive stuff. And then we were tickled with the new locations for both the tree lighting and spaghetti dinner in December, and, you know, unless people suggest other places, I think we're geared to having it the exact same way at the school. They were very welcoming and very opening to continue hosting us there. So with that, I just want, oh, sorry. And everybody who makes a possible, you know, there's so many people that make it possible, you are included, but the feet on the ground really happens with our thirty to forty active volunteers. We meet once a month, we just had a meeting this evening, and we just have fun together, and we're productive, and make things rock and roll, and so far, so good. So these are truly the people that make it up, happen. And in your packet, I just wanted to briefly review the events that are coming up for this year. We, as always, we appreciate your attendance at any of these events, and your ideas and suggestions are always welcome to make these events better each year. I'd like to confirm with you this evening, if I may, that the City Council Meet and Greet dates for June and September still work with everybody? Just a nod is fine. This was a nice addition last year, and I think residents really appreciated being able to have some one-on-one time, so thank you for that. And then as a reminder, we have two events coming up quickly. Taste the Town is happening Saturday, a week from this, Saturday on 2/29, and as mentioned, we have two dates, sixteen city restaurants signed up so far. And then two weeks later, St. Pat's Day Dinner is happening. It's a first-time city-partnered event, and looking forward to changing it up with a little live music by Aaron Moore. So that is about all on St. Pat's. I'm happy to say we will have a 2020 census table at both the Taste the Town and the St. Pat's Day Dinner, so look forward to seeing some fun things come from that. And we'd love to see you all at these events. Are there any questions?
Any questions from council? Alderman Sanoyka?
It's not so much a question, but just a comment from residents. For the residents that wanted to participate in the City Council Meet and Greet... For the residents that wanted to participate in the City Council Meet and Greet, I mean, they really wanted to participate and were upset that they had missed it. So I see that we have two of those meet and greets on the calendar for the City Market. Is it possible to have a booth, even if not all of us can make it, for residents to be able to speak with us on a weekend? Or do we not have space at this time with the amount of vendors that are participating?
So are you talking about a solid booth each market? I love that idea. And yes, we definitely have space.
Okay. If we still have space as we near these dates, that might be something that we might want to explore.
Sure. I will definitely pursue that and talk with you more about how best to make that happen.
Thank you.
Further comments or questions?
Okay.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Alderman Bessemer. One other event, it's not through the community events, the library does their annual Dr. Seuss Birthday on March 7th.
Yes.
I encourage people to come out and enjoy our library and all the events. It's great for kids, English and Spanish readers, should be a good time.
Will be a good time. Hopefully, the council has received the email from the library inviting you all to read and participate. There's two sessions, morning and afternoon. I encourage you to make both if you can. I'll be there. Did that prior two years, and that's a good point. Thank you for sharing that for the library's behalf. Is there a motion to adjourn? Thank you, Alderman O'Brien. Thank you, Alderman Beniziano. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, meeting adjourned.